Hi, my name is Maria Nava and I'm a parent from El Gab and I have two students there, a kinder and a third grader. And I'm here because I was upset that our principal is moving. She's done a great job. And I've just gotta say that Mr. Hayes, Brian, is getting moved to third. I mean, he was a, he's the president from the after-school program at El Gabi Land School. And if there's no foundation, because there's a lot of students that are, my daughter is one of the students that got reclassified from Spanish to English learner, so she's strong. So, thanks to Mr. Hayes. He's done, brought a lot of, you know, foundations. And Ms. Victor's done a lot of changes. And we have had different principals at our school. My son sits here at North Salinas, so I've been, my kids have been there at that school site for, probably my son's studying at Kinder and he's now in North Salinas. And I just want, I'm here for you guys, all of you guys up here, to leave our principal at El Gab. We, as parents, are tired of, you know, the switching of taking our teachers, getting skin slips. It's hard for us. I'm one of those parents that, I look at our teachers, you know, they give us advice, you know, do this for your student. And thank God, my daughter was reclassified. And thanks to Ms. Victor and Brian Hayes that are here, I'm just asking you guys to re-leave them. Don't move. I don't know if we have a principal coming to our school for the following year. Do you guys know anything about that?
(inaudible)
Okay, so I ask for you guys to let us know, mail out a letter to all our families that couldn't make it because they're agriculture workers, as you guys know. And there's some people that can't make it. And take consideration of our signatures that we got in two days. And I was one of the parents that was standing there, morning, lunch, to, or others' parents that probably don't know how to read English, explaining to them sometimes they don't even know how to read, and explaining to them. And they were not aware of it for the simple fact that they didn't know how to read. They didn't know how to, you know, there's a lot of families out there. And I'm 100% for my school and I want Ms. Victor and Mr. Hayes to stay as a vice principal and Ms. Victor. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Benarva Jurado. I am from El Gabi Land Elementary School. I am the secretary of the PTO. I've been at that school since 2004. I've seen many principals come, go, due to the frustration of the administration staff being around. Teachers are frustrated and then they get in one or two years and then they move on to. All I ask for is some kind of stability. Because, just like our kids, they need a stable home to grow in and develop and have a safe place to be. The more we move around, the more we do things, it starts, it starts everything all over again. So whatever's already set in stone right now has to be rebuilt every time we have a new administrator come in. Because they cannot just follow what's been done. I feel that, as a parent, it's very frustrating for me to have to try and reinvent the wheel every year that we have a new administration come through. Like I say, I'm the secretary, I've been there, I am active participant in the class, at least I try and do it at least once or twice. Mr. Garcia asked me, he knows I'm there, day in, day out in the school. Well, I just, it hurts to see. I'm sorry, but it's hard for me to see all my children go through this every year. Especially because I am there to help not only my kids-
...issue with Ms. Greenlee where she, where she mistreated my nephew, the issue that she had.
Excuse me. Did you say it was the agenda?
Yes. She was very unprofessional with him, with an issue she handled with my nephew. She judged him and would not hear him out and called him stupid. I think that, okay, should be treated-
May I ask you to make an appointment with superintendent?
She made a, she made a mistake.
Later.
She made a mistake.
Clarification. Mr. Clear.
Yes, we're talking about things that aren't on the agenda right now, so if you delay a little bit-
Okay, thank you.
Is that okay? Thank you. I don't see the agenda, please. The big ones, I don't see the agenda. We're in item number, C8, consent items.
C1, 2, which is Mrs. Greenlee, and C3, 4, Mrs. Louington, for separate vote and public comment. I think there's a couple more that we've been asked before. And item C, under Carrie Dyback, we need all 12. It's removed, I'm sorry, removed.
Yeah, wasn't, wasn't five? I think we heard it. So, we're looking at, voting for four. To approve consent items, that's with C1, 2, 3, 4. Motion to approve consent items minus, uh, C1, 2, 3-
Thank you.
C1, 2, 3, 4.
I'm sorry, I, I'm a little stuck there. I wanted to pull the minus, um, would I can go there?
Karen, we can pull.
Well, you can, yeah, okay, sorry.
I'm sorry, did I, did I do that out of order? Okay, sorry. Um, I wanted to have, um, five A, B, C, and D, and G pulled. I-
C and?
And...
A, B, C, and G?
A, B, C, D, and G.
G was removed.
G? No, C was, or E was, E was definitely, yeah. And those are the only ones, they're the ones with the G. Thank you.
A, B, C, D, and G. Just so you know, the microphones aren't working very well.
Can you hear me now? We have a point of clarification on that, that I said, the previous, I mean, the previous items were removed to five A, B, C, D, and G.
For-
That's your fully.
For me, the full, A, yeah, five A, B, C, D, and G.
Yes, okay. Go ahead.
And also, your question was what would-
With regard to consent item-
Consent item C1 and 2?
Yeah, C1, 2, 3, and 4.
That's correct, but there's two, two different issues, so would we like to do two separate pulls?
That's, that's fine. However, it appears that you're allowing C9 to pass, so that would affect 3 and 4.
Right, exactly.
So, and it doesn't make sense to us that you would pass, you would approve a transfer of a principal's rose belt when the transfer of the current principal hasn't been taken back.
So, I, oh, all right, then, uh, eight and nine, is that, is that what you added?
Yes, thank you.
And so add eight and nine.
You can speak in request about these. The audience can request, you can request that you pull, the audience can give a question.
I'm, I'm just an audience when I pull it. So, okay, if I may, we'll try to clarify this in the discussion. We're pulling item C1 and 2 regarding Mrs. Greenlee, C3 and 4 regarding Mrs. Louington, and also eight and nine, we just contingent on the list. And five.
And I'm sorry, item C12, the appointments you can, actually, just pull them all. With all due respect, I understand through Kathy, the same kind of room, can't hear each other.
We cannot hear you, that machine.
The machine?
We can't hear you.
Please have some care up here, please join us.
I can't hear much closer, I'm just telling you what the people behind us are saying. They can't hear, they can't hear, it's if you could speak closer to the microphone.
I just apologized a little while ago because you couldn't hear me, so that's why I, you know.
The volume needs to go up. Well, you can tell them, they'll put it up.
It's all spoken. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I'm not used to a microphone right straight off the tape. I apologize for putting this forward. Okay, come on, please.
New vocabulary for you.
Anything else? And, uh, A, B, C, D, E, I mean, A, B, C, yeah, items, please, please, let me-
Oh, you're gonna skip over-
Number five. Go ahead.
I'm, I'm willing to address five, but I will say typically we go down the line and I'm not comfortable with this. I guess if you're telling me to do this, I will, but we're skipping all of that C and I think that's why we have so many people here tonight. And we can't ignore the elephant in the-
But at the same time, we're gonna address the entire consent items with the right votes.
Yeah, okay, but you don't want to do-
No, no, I did apologize. It's good to do that. Approve the consent items, uh, open for motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent items minus, um, C1, 2, 3, 4, and eight and nine, and five, um, five A through E, the ones that, that's, which is five, A through D and G. Five A through D and G, sorry. So I'd like to make a motion except for those other stuff.
I'm sorry about the audience member, he asked that they all be pulled.
I believe that- Some of these are not accepted by one, two, that's why-
Frank, you were joking, right? Were you joking when you said pull all of the items in five?
If you change it.
In C.
There's a reason why you say that, it's because they're all contingent.
Mr. Kim has a floor, right?
Well, he asked a question.
Yeah, he has a floor. Yeah, thank you. Do you, you honestly want to pull all 12 items under C?
Yeah.
Frank, come with the podium. We are requesting that all items under five, uh, consent item C be pulled because if you make adjustments at one school, it could potentially impact another. We're not saying that we'll talk about every transfer, but I think it's wise to pull them just in, in just an abundance of caution.
So, I adjust my motion. Just my motion. People see one, two, three.
So, there's a motion, the floor?
If there was not clarity, make another motion. Motion to adopt consent items with the exclusion of C1 through 4 and 6 through 12, and five, A through D and G.
Correct.
On the second.
Okay. Focus down, focus on that one time. Can you call for a vote? All in favor?
Yes.
Any need? Five, zero. Thank you. Okay, now, we're adding public comment. Does that public comment, can you hear me? Yeah. Hard to find out if you hear me. Okay, number C1 and 2, open for discussion. And, uh, we do have three minutes. It's getting late, I'm gonna need permission from the board, what is it, 10:30? 10:30. To continue beyond 10:30, or else we just postpone it and we need to move ourselves later on. Okay? So we do have time to let people here, so let's move it fast. Thank you.
Good evening, President, Dr. Lusa and Board. My name is Sylvia Capuyan. I'm at Roosevelt, a biennial teacher in second grade, and I will keep this short and simple. I believe, as people have said various times, students are the focus of what we do. Students are very resilient, unlike what some parents have been talking about, our teachers, they are very resilient. Teachers are here for the students, it's not the other way around. The students are not here for the teachers. Changes have been done before, every year, and never was there such an outcry as we're seeing today. Who started this outcry? We had a horrible superintendent, Dr. Sabey, and parents and teachers, nobody came and created that outcry that that man really caused to our district, and we still fail. Is it my opportunity?
Yes, you have a floor.
Thank you. Administrators and principals are not tenured. They are at the will of the superintendent and the board. Mrs. Greenlee's last year at Roosevelt, and I was there, many teachers were removed to different grade levels. And Ms. Greenlee told us, "Trust me, I know what I'm doing. Change is good." So therefore, I say, you know, the same motto should apply here, change is good. And we should trust you to know what, you guys know, why you're doing it. Teaching is always an option, and I have always said, I don't go with the flow, as I've said everybody else goes. I'm here for the students. And so, I, and I am strongly eager that if our heart is not into it, as teachers, as parents, the children will be picking up on the light that us teachers have. And so therefore, what occurred that year when Ms. Greenlee said change is good, a teacher, a friend of mine, is about to retire, retired, an exceptional teacher, she retired. So, I believe if, as a teacher, we're, we feel that strongly, then maybe it's time for us-
Next, please.
I don't know how to make it.
You have the same problem, Mike.
Okay. And, um, I believe in the board, I believe in the administration, they may come and they may go, but they always seem to put their heads together and make good decisions. And when they make a change, it's always, it's there, they always make the change thinking of the children. They wouldn't have a job if it wasn't for the children. Teachers move all the time and change levels. Why should it be different for principals? If they're as super as they report to be, then they'll make it as a super teacher and be able to collaborate with their other teachers and make it back to a principal position if in fact they are as good as they're supposed to be. Like I say, I've seen administration come and go, board members come and go, but I believe in the decisions that you make. You make them for a reason. And teachers, we work with whatever we're given, just like we're, we're, every year we're given a new set of students. We don't know them, they don't know us, but we learn from them, they learn from us, we grow with them, we help them, we help them to grow. And a teacher doesn't just teach, a teacher shows the students how they can help themselves, not just today, but forever. And I worked under Mrs. Greenlee and I saw a lot of things that I probably should not have seen. And I do have a lot to say about that, but it will be in paper. Again, teachers were, uh, students were not always treated fairly, teachers were not always treated fairly. Again, I have a lot to say and it will come out later. Again, I believe that the decision that you made should stand, and you should stand firmly upon what you decided. A good principal going back into the classroom is only gonna make the other teachers great if they're great. Thank you.
Next, please.
My name is Pomaruela, I'm a parent, and, uh, everybody talks and wonders about Ms. Greenlee, and she probably is a good person with some people. Uh, she was not that great with my kids. My kids were bullied by her. I set up several, I tried to set up several appointments so I can see the former superintendent, and she's giving me the runaround. One time I came to this microphone and I spoke my mind, and then the superintendent said, "Oh, oh, let's, let's talk about it, you know, let's set up an appointment for tomorrow." And basically what I did is move my kids to a different school where they were bullied again, and for some people, they're still around here. Some people have no business in education. And, uh, whatever decision you take on regards to Mrs. Greenlee, I will be pleased that you're gonna take the right decision. Thank you.
I'm Nikki Rothie. I am a current parent at Mission Park Elementary School. I think after listening to tonight and listening to a lot of people talk, that, you know, we base some opinions. I think that the board, the district, and frankly, the city has a lot more to worry about than some other issues that may be focused on than just one principal or a couple principals. It sounds like there's a lot more issues involved. And it goes to my point of, Mrs. Greenlee at our school personally is there by herself with 700-plus students. She has a fabulous working, teaching vice principal, but no vice principal, she's been doing this on her own. And I think maybe some of these issues that have come up, maybe where the problem is lying, is that we need to do our due diligence as a district, as parents, to support this staff and its educators. I noticed also with the LCAP presentation and the discussion on the LCAP presentation, that it didn't warrant any kind of discussion afterwards. Because I feel that the district has done their due diligence in, in coming to and being transparent with its constituents and with the parents and with the teachers. You notice that we're all informed. We were informed by email, we were informed by focus groups, we were informed by surveys. That was not done when it comes to changing all the staff in the district and its administration. I feel that you need to do the same due diligence that you do for other parts in the education program along with your staff. And you can't base things off of something that is not factual and not in paper. If, I would like to see in paper statistics, factual reasoning to job descriptions, and why one principal is better than another principal. Because what we keep hearing is, you'll love her, oh, this one coming in is gonna be great, and then we hear the same the next year, and the next year. And we're just supposed to sit down and say, okay, maybe this year, okay, maybe this year. Well, we're tired of hearing the same runaround. We have a good foundation in place. We have a strong foundation with our teachers, we have a strong foundation with our students, and this coming in on a change of curriculum, we are in a positive upswing. And to take away the foundation that is the, the underlying factor to the reason why we are at the state we're in, will then demote the teacher's view, it will demote the student's view, there, it will demote their emotions to going forward. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Catherine Camashado and I'm a teacher at Mission Park Elementary School. An incident was brought to your attention where my students, the parents of my students and myself were unfortunately involved. The point of me speaking is to shed light on this event and how it reflects on the extraordinary service Principal Greenlee has provided Mission Park. During the back-to-school night for this year, a stepfather began making aggressive and offensive comments out loud while I was presenting. What was, started to be a peaceful and productive night quickly turned into a situation where I was in fear for the safety of everyone in my classroom. Children started to cry and parents took them out of the room, parents began to leave quickly from the classroom to try to find Mrs. Greenlee and Mrs. Crumey for help. Fortunately, Principal Greenlee and Mrs. Crumey, our vice principal, came to my classroom within moments of being alerted. In an abundance of caution for the safety of her children, she called the police for assistance because of known history and incidents that have happened at our school in the past with this family. As a teacher, my number one- As a teacher, my number one priority is the safety of our children. We don't need to be reminded of the horrific events that have happened at schools recently. Without Principal Greenlee's unwavering dedication to the well-being of her students, I think, I'm thankful to have her and for her to be there that night. I mean, back-to-school night is already a nerve-wracking thing, and to have an incident like that occur was a traumatic experience. And I am very proud to have Mrs. Greenlee and fortunate to have her as my principal to get through a stressful and traumatic experience like that. And just to close, Mission Park decided to have a theme this year at school, and it was superheroes. Everything had to do with superheroes, and in that incident, Mrs. Greenlee was my superhero, Mrs. Crumby was, and they were there by my side in a situation that I hope no other teacher has to go through. Thank you.